Good afternoon. I do not look like a sprinter, but in this session I am because we're going to make some tracks. So we are going to begin at Hebrews chapter 10 verse 19. We've already really covered verses 19 through 22, but I want to get the context. And I just want to make a few remarks about the remainder of the chapter from verse 23 onwards. Now even that, we've referred various times this week to much of what is in this section. So we're not going to belabor it. We're going to just see it again. And then we're going to go right into Hebrews 11 and get as far as we can. Because we want, in the next session, Lord willing, at 4:45, Brother Henry is going to share his testimony of how the Lord Jesus saved him and the work of God's grace in his life. And then later after supper, we're going to take up chapter 12, hopefully, if maybe have to finish up a bit of 11. But we're hoping to mainly be through 12 by the time we adjourn for the night, so that we can just have 13 to do in the morning. And again, I remind you, we're not going to hit everything as thoroughly as it deserves. Hebrews 10:19. Therefore brethren, having boldness enter the holiest by the blood of Jesus, by a new and living way which he consecrated for us, through the veil that is his flesh, and having a high priest over the house of God, let us draw near with a true heart, in full assurance of faith, having our hearts sprinkled from an evil conscience, and our bodies washed with pure water. Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering; for he who promised is faithful. And let us consider one another in order to stir up love and good works, not forsaking the assembling of ourselves together, as is the manner of some, but exhorting one another, and so much the more, as you see the day approaching. Now, in light of the great access we have into the presence of God by our high priest, and in light of the tremendous openness of this relationship, we then get these exhortations, led us statements that we've seen at various sections of the book of Hebrews. And particularly verse 23 says, "Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering." So to paraphrase the thought here, it's not just that we say the right thing, but that we live in conjunction with what we say. We possess what we profess, we might say. For he who promised is faithful. So first and foremost, we have this confidence that's rooted in the fidelity of God, in his faithfulness. But also, you notice related to it, so often you have the work of God, what we call divine sovereignty, and near it in scripture, you'll have human responsibility. Well, God is faithful. He's unwavering. He's never going to let us down. He's never going to leave us or forsake us, chapter 13 will tell us. But in verse 24, it's now what we're to do for one another. Because after all, we are again, not to be apathetic zombies or something. We're not on automatic pilot. We are to act in light of the truth that we know in Christ. We're to act in light of our position in Him. Let us consider one another in order to stir up love and good works. So again, this has to be the Lord working through us. Philippians 2:12 said, "It is Christ who works in and through you to work unto will concerning his good pleasure." And so we know that the Holy Spirit works in us and works through us and gives us gifts and wants us to use our gifts and our possessions and our time for the benefit of other believers. And it's a tremendous asset to the work of God. Now bearing in mind the context of Hebrews, when we think about how these believers were under assault, how they were facing tribulation and affliction and hardship of various kinds, and explicit persecution, and the threat of more and worse persecution, it seems coming. In light of that, how much more believers needed to show fellowship one toward another? Fellowship not just being light, social interaction, but we might say mutual investment in one another. Having a common share in Christ, we then have a common share in one another. That we have to look at ourselves, the way that metaphor of the body implies in 1 Corinthians 12, that the body can't take the view that any part of the body is vestigial. You know, the idea of vestigial organs, that was an old idea that the evolutionist promoted, that there are bits of us that don't really do anything in the body. Well, the more we've studied the body, the less we find any part of it is expendable, the less that we can do without it. None of it is unnecessary. And it's the same in the body of Christ. We need one another. And we need to be working in one another's lives. God helping us, God giving us wisdom. Now, the balance, of course, is, we don't want to be what the scripture warns us against, a busy body meddling in other people's matters. That's not what I'm talking about. We don't want to usurp the work of the great high priest, whose responsibility it is ultimately to perfect the work that is in us. But at the same time, that great high priest uses us to encourage others, to build one another's up, edification, to share the word, to admonish one another. And Hebrews is going to say a good bit about that in this final section of the book. But here, we're to consider one another in order to stir up love and good works. I think firstly, to stir it up in ourselves, that we'd show genuine love toward our brothers and sisters, that we'd do good works. Now you think about the last time, you know, somebody's written a novel lately called Love in a Time of COVID. I certainly am not a great novel reader, and I don't think I'd read any modern novel. It had to really be recommended by somebody I respect. But if you think about Christian love in a time of COVID, now, as much as at any time, as far as the Western church goes, and it's probably true in other parts of the world as well, we have opportunity to show love to believers unlike ever before and to do good works. We have all kinds of opportunity, because people are getting scattered, they're becoming more isolated, they are lonely. There's more and more dissension and division. This is a great opportunity for us going before the Lord and saying, "Lord, use me to produce love and good works, even in my local assembly." Because I believe that's the chief context here, because he says in verse 25, "not forsaking the assembling of ourselves together, as the manner of some, but exhorting one another, and so much the more, as you see the day approaching." Now, that's often been used as merely a proof text to say you've got to be at the meeting. Well, it's important. If you can be at the meeting, good things happen at the meeting. The local church meeting is designed to be a place of edification. Now, we realize through human failure, through our sin, through our dullness sometimes, it's not what it might be. It's not always equally edifying. Sometimes it can be boring or even discouraging, and it ought not to be that way. And we ought to strive. "Lord, make us in our local assemblies what the church is supposed to be according to thy word." But these people were being tempted to forsake assembling of themselves together because there was a very real threat of persecution. And because identifying with the believers was identifying with a despised minority, identifying with a group of people that to a Jew, these people were disloyal to their heritage. They were self-loathing Jews. If you loved Judaism, if you loved Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, if you loved Moses and the law and the traditions given to our fathers, you wouldn't countenance this Jesus of Nazareth. You wouldn't be following the way or associating with his church. And so you can imagine the pressure culturally, and probably in some instances physically, that was being brought to bear on these people. It would just be easier to say, "Well, I'm not going to meet with those believers." But no, now we need to assemble together, he says, more than ever. We don't want to forsake that, so much the more as you see the day approaching. Well, the New King James translation capitalizes "the" day there. It's capital D, and I think rightly so. Because when you look at that phrase in scripture, it's thinking about either the day of Christ, when he appears for his church, what we think about in the rapture, or even beyond it, the day of the Lord, that's going to usher in the Lord taking back this world through judgment, the events of revelation. And as we see, in other words, these last days that we're in speeding toward their conclusion, that's all the more reason to gather together in the local church, okay? This is meant to be, the local church is meant to be a shelter in this world, a little colony of heaven, if you will. When Philippians 3 says that our citizenship is in heaven, it's that word that has that sense of you're a member of a colony. And your citizenship therefore is somewhere else. It's not where you're living. We are, as we'll find out in the next chapter, Hebrews 11, pilgrims and strangers. We're heading for another country as pilgrims. And we're strangers because we don't belong around here. Well, how much more? When you're not from a place, when you're a stranger, and when you're in transit, when you're heading somewhere else, how important do the members of your diaspora become to you? Now, I don't know if you've experienced that, but if you've lived in a country, let's say, where you don't speak the language, and you're there for a period of time, perhaps on business or something. It's nice if you can go to somewhere, and for Christians, this often comes in the form of what they call international churches. So for example, you can go to Dubai, and there are international churches there. You know, whereas people in the streets are speaking Arabic or maybe even other languages, because Dubai has a lot of immigrants and a lot of migrant workers from other places. But you can go to the international church, and they're speaking in English. So there's an identification there. In one of the towns near where our assembly meets, we have the German club. And the German club, at least used to be, I don't know what it is today, but where Pennsylvania Germans could get together and speak German. And I was in a place not too long ago, I can't even remember what state I was in, honestly. But I drove by a Belgian, I think it was Duluth, Minnesota. I drove by a Belgian club. You know, and there are other different ethnic groups that have their clubs or have some kind of community center where you can go and you can enjoy socialization with those kind of people. You can speak your heart language. You can eat some of the food from home, whatever that is, papousas or something like that, which we've yet to see. But anyway, you know, where are the promises of the papousas? Anyway, you know, this is targeted ministry, brethren. Anyway, but the assembly is to be like that. It is to be a place where people who don't fit in this world, people who are strangers here, because this isn't our home. Our home is in heaven, and we're waiting for the Lord to come and receive us to himself. The assembly is a place where we gather unto him together. And we're unified, not by our ethnicity or by our educational background or our socioeconomic level, but we're united by our position in Christ, by our salvation that we possess in him. So if ever there's a time when the local assembly is important, it's in these last days. I mean, there's never a time when it's been more relevant. It's never been irrelevant, let me just tell you that. But there's never a time when it's been more relevant than now. We need the church. We need to gather together. We need to assemble together and encourage one another to hang on to the truth, not to drift away.
It needs you.
Yeah, it needs you, exactly right. So not only do I need to go, and you know, we always have that mentality, well, I need to go and get my needs met. But as my friend Craig Shikardji had one of the best sermon titles I've ever heard, the title was "The Christian Spigot or Sponge?" Now, that's an excellent title. Is the Christian a spigot or a sponge? A spigot, you know, some of you call that the tap or maybe the faucet. You turn it on, right, and it dispenses water. What's the sponge do? It absorbs water, it soaks it up, right? So the Christian is to be that spigot, that tap. You're to be the one that out of your belly will flow rivers of living water. As the Holy Spirit is in you, working through you, that blessing will come to others, not just coming and absorbing. Although we all need to take in the benefit of the assembly too. Let's not think any one of us doesn't need the ministry of other brothers and sisters in our lives. Now, he turns then in 26 to a warning, and we've referred to this before. But he says, "If we sin willfully, after we've received the knowledge of the truth, there no longer remains a sacrifice for sins, but a certain fearful expectation of judgment and fiery indignation which will devour the adversaries." And when he says here, "if we sin willfully," we're not talking about any kind of sin. There's a very specific sin in mind here. I believe it is the same thing that the Lord spoke about in John 6:2, when he said that the Holy Spirit, when he comes, the Comforter, will convict the world of sin. And how did he define that sin? Not as adultery or drunkenness or lying or any of the myriad of other things that the Bible tells us are sins. Sin, that is the specific thing the Holy Spirit is interested in convicting people of, is unbelief. Because he says, "I've sinned because they believe not on me." So that's the sort of sin we're talking about here. We've seen in Hebrews, and we'll see it again in chapter 11, faith is the central thing. This is what we need. Believers must believe. We must go on believing. And if you don't believe, that is the willful sin of unbelief. At least if you don't repent of that sin, it becomes the willful sin of unbelief. Of course, the Old Testament had references and distinguished, by the way, between people who sinned in various ways versus those who apostatized. And you can find references for that in Deuteronomy 17 and 19 and other places. But it says in verse 28, "Anyone who has rejected Moses's law dies without mercy on the testimony of two or three witnesses." Now, I remember what he said at the beginning of the book in chapter 2. How, "If the word spoken by angels proved steadfast, and every transgression received a just recompense, how shall we escape if we neglect so great a salvation?" And we said, "The principle is that if when God spoke through an angel, or if when God gave through the disposition of angels the law, that that was taken seriously by God, nobody was allowed to let it slide. You couldn't break that with impunity. You got the just consequences, the punishment that your crime deserved. How much more if you neglect what God has now said in his Son? That's what chapter 2 was arguing. Similar type of argument here, when he says in verse 29, "Of how much worse punishment do you suppose will he be thought worthy, who has trampled the Son of God underfoot, counted the blood of the covenant by which he was sanctified a common thing, and insulted the spirit of grace?" So again, you look at those things specifically, he's not talking about, you know, forgetting to pray or stopping to read, not reading my Bible for some weeks on end, or not showing up at the meetings of the local church. All of those things can be very spiritually detrimental and harmful, and we can be backsliding therefore. But that's not what he's talking about here. This is a very deliberate repudiation of the Lord Jesus Christ and his work. In light of everything he's said up to this point in the book, the great high priest we have, the better tabernacle, the real one in heaven, the better sacrifices, the better covenant with better promises, all of these things that we have. If you turn your back on it and say, "No, Jesus Christ is nothing to me. He's a blasphemer, I'm going back to Judaism," then this is indeed that willful sin of unbelief that is going to result in judgment. As the Lord says, "Vengeance is mine, I will repay," quoting from Deuteronomy 32, a very solemn section of God's word, and is quoted again also in Romans chapter 12, by the way. And then again, "The Lord will judge his people," later in that same passage. And it's thought by many, at least, that this word "judge" here in the second quotation is the thought that God will vindicate his people. We remember God's judgment has two sides. Yes, it is to punish the guilty, but it is also to protect the innocent and protect those who've been oppressed. That's why so often the psalmist will cry out, "Judge me, oh God." He's not saying, "Punish me for my sins." That's not what he's saying. He's saying, "Look at my case. I'm being defrauded and oppressed and persecuted. Deal with the people that are hurting me." And these two sides of judgment, God is going to faithfully do. And he tells us in verse 31, "It is a fearful thing to fall into the hands of the living God." Now again, as with all the other warning sections, he then says something where he indicates that he's confident that the majority of them are real believers. He says, "Recall the former days, in which after you were illuminated, you endured a great struggle with sufferings, partly while you were made a spectacle, both by reproaches and tribulations, and partly while you became companions of those who were so treated. For you had compassion on me in my chains, and joyfully accepted the plundering of your goods, knowing that you have a better and an enduring possession for yourselves in heaven. Therefore do not cast away your confidence, which has great reward." Now, he says, "Remember all the things that you've suffered up to this point for the name of the Lord Jesus Christ," sort of like the Olympic coach, that before the race, you know, the distance runner, when he's considering, "I've got to run a marathon, 26.2 miles. Do I really have it in me? Do I really want to do this? You know, can I really get out there and race?" And the coach says, "Listen, you've been training for years. Think of all the hundreds of miles over the years that you've run to prepare yourself. Think of all the terrible hours you'd have, you've had to get up at." You can tell I'm not a morning person. "Think of how you've had to hit the gym, and you've had to cross-train, then you've had to eat just the right diet of nutritious papousas and all those kinds of things, you know." Yes, the ministry is so convicting. But anyway, and he says, "Now get out there and run that race in light of all that suffering, all that pain, all that sweat." Well, in essence here, remember that you've already endured some hardship as the good soldier of Jesus Christ. Remember that you've already learned some of the pain of what it means to identify with the rejected Christ in a world that hated him and gave him a cross. So don't throw away your confidence now, because it has great reward. He's pointing them on to the hope they have in heaven, and he's saying, you know, "Your confidence isn't misplaced. If you could see what God's going to give you, you wouldn't want to quit now. You wouldn't want to give up now or back down. You need to go on in light of that confidence." Now, it's been said, "One of the greatest tests a believer can face is waiting." And you see that in Abraham's life, don't you? We've already had it referred to this week, that here Abraham has promised the land. But he gets into the land, and there's somebody already living there. The Canaanite was then in the land, says Genesis 12. And then the famine comes. And what does Abraham do? The man of the altar, the man who's living like a pilgrim in a tent, does he wait on God and say, "Lord, what should I do in this famine?" No, we don't read of him praying. He goes right down to Egypt. He takes matters into his own hands. He does the opposite of what Proverbs 3:5 and 6 tells us to do. That those verses say, as you know, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart, and lean not to thy known understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall make straight thy paths." He doesn't do that. He says, "Hey, there's a stable Nile river down there in Egypt. I don't have to worry about the spring and the autumnal rains. I can go down to Egypt where they're not experiencing famine, and I can be safe." And he's down there, and but for the providential protection of God, he almost loses his wife. The whole prospect of the promised seed is almost completely derailed but from the intervention of God in his life. And that's a difficult thing, isn't it? We've heard already how he didn't wait when Sarah told him he went into Hagar, surrogate motherhood. And there was a child produced, but it wasn't the child of promise. It wasn't going to be Ishmael that the Lord was going to make into the great nation with the seed that would bless all nations of the earth. Yes, Ishmael would be a great nation for Abraham's sake. But it was Isaac they were waiting on, and they had to wait a quarter century for the Lord to fulfill that word. Well, in like manner, they're being told to wait. "You have need of endurance," verse 36, "so that after you've done the will of God, you may receive the promise. For yet a little while, and he who is coming will come and will not tarry. And the just shall live by faith; but if anyone draws back, my soul has no pleasure in him." Excuse me. "But we are not of those who draw back to perdition, but of those who believe to the saving of the soul." So the last thing to exhort them and encourage them to confidence, besides what we're about to see in chapter 11, the great examples of faith from the ages, the great historical heroes of the faith, some have called it the Hall of Fame of Faith, who showed that waiting on God, that believing his promise, that continuing under hardship is not misplaced, and that even they still never saw the total fulfillment of what now the Hebrews are being brought into. And so he's going to encourage them from that passage. But here, he encourages them with the coming of the Lord. And you know, some years ago, not too many years ago, maybe about eight or 10, a certain missionary lady, elderly lady, came back from the mission field in Africa. And she came to a Bible study where I had been assigned to teach through the book of First Thessalonians. And when the day was finished, she came up to me, and she said, "You know, I've been in the United States for X number of months. I think it was eight or 10 months." She said, "This is the first time I've heard anyone mention in public ministry, the coming of the Lord." She said, now, this woman was well into her 70s, and she said, "You know, when I was a girl, we heard about it almost every meeting. And I used to listen to hear if my parents were still breathing, you know, at night, if they were still in their rooms." And I've had other brothers, another brother out in Minnesota told me a few weeks ago, he said, "Yeah, I used to come home from school and run upstairs to see if my mother was there. And if she wasn't there, I'd call her friend on the phone. Is my mother there? Because I thought the Lord might have come, and I'm left behind." A lot of people got saved because of that truth of the Lord's coming, you know? And yet it's true that in modern Christianity, we don't hear much about the coming of the Lord. And even in modern Christian hymnody, there are some decent Christian songs being written today. There's a lot of trash too. So just like with the old hymns, you've got to be discerning. You have to examine it by the word of God, okay? So let me just say that, because I can show you hymns that are hundreds of years old or even thousands of years old that are in error. So just because it's old doesn't mean it's good, just because it's new doesn't mean it's bad. But we've got to be discerning. And let's be frank, you can hear new songs like 10,000 Reasons that talk about our faith, that when we're on our deathbed, we know that the Lord is going to be there for us. But excuse me, how do I know I'm going to get to my deathbed? How do I know that I'm going to die that way? How do I know that I'm not one of those who am alive and remain when the Lord Jesus comes? I like how the Believers hymnbook has a verse of "it is well with my soul" that's a little bit different. Now, a brother I knew in Northern Ireland who wrote some books on the history of hymns, he used to get kind of upset with people that changed the original hymn lyrics, because he says usually the original was better. But I like what the Believers hymnbook did in this case. It has a line in it, "is well with my soul," where it says, "The sky, not the grave, is our gold." And I like that. You know, we're not, you hear so much today from believers, "Oh, when I die, I'll go to be with the Lord." Well, "if you die, indeed you shall, absent from the body, present with the Lord," 2 Corinthians 5 says. But that is not our hope. We're looking for the blessed hope and the glorious appearing of our Lord Jesus, as Titus 2 says. We're looking for our Lord to come. This is what gives us comfort, 1 Thessalonians 4 says. And this is what Hebrews is exhorting us to. Hang in there, have confidence, because the Lord is coming. And we need to live by faith. That's why he quotes the "just shall live by faith" there from Habakkuk chapter 2. Now, that brings us, as I say, to the Hall of Fame of Faith, chapter 11. "Faith is the substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen." Yeah, go ahead, bro. Go ahead.
We looked in Matthew, and we remember Matthew is a gospel specifically with Jews in mind in many ways, and about the king. And as we considered in Matthew, remember that the Lord Jesus, his ministry was characterized by going around preaching. And as we considered in Matthew, remember that the Lord Jesus, his ministry was characterized by going around preaching and teaching. And so the parable of the sore. The sore is the son of man. He goes forward sowing. So the importance of the word of God, the word of God, the word of God, all through Hebrews. And then we've gotten into the estimation of the high priest. His estimation of us. And in Matthew thirteen, again, with the mysteries of the kingdom, you have those beautiful parables concerning the kingdom of heaven is like a man who found a treasure in a field. And what did he do? He went and sold all that he had that he might buy that treasure. That is the Lord's estimation of his people today. That's a wonderful encouragement, isn't it? We waver in our estimation of him. That's what they were struggling with, their estimation of the Lord Jesus. And then we remember the pearl, the man that found the pearl that was unlike any other, a pearl that jewel, the product of suffering. And what did he do? He went and sold all that he had in order that he might purchase that pearl. And so the other, uh, 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 one of the other major parables there had to do with the sowing of the word, that along with the sowing of the word, there would be also be the tears that would grow alongside the wheat. And we remember that again, the servants of the farmer saw the tears that had come up and said, an enemy has done this. And so the enemy is sowing his seed, isn't he? And so again, what the parable said is, let them both grow together until the end. And what you're dealing here with a great degree in Hebrews, chapter ten is the reality of the system that's in place. And the reality of the system that's in place is verse thirty six, you have need of patience, you see. Because the program is let them both grow together. We cannot expect God's judgment to fall on the wicked and the oppressor now. And so back to Matthew thirteen, it's interesting that immediately following, if you just turn there for a minute, but immediately following the parables of verse fourteen, the kingdom of heaven is like unto a treasure hidden in a field, of which when a man hath found, he hideth, and for joy thereof goeth and selleth all that he hath, and buyeth that fruit. That's the Lord Jesus selling himself. His estimation of us. And again, the kingdom of heaven is like unto a merchant man seeking goodly pearls, who, when he had found one pearl of great pot price, went and sold all that he had and bought it. Now, it's interesting, the next parable. It says, verse forty seven, and again, the kingdom of heaven is like unto a net that was cast into the sea and gathered of every kind. Didn't just gather the, 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 the wheat, so to speak. It gathers tears too, doesn't it? It gathers fish of every kind. And verse forty eight, which, when it was full, let them grow together until the end of the age. A system in place according to Hebrews, chapter ten, that by definition is exposing who the wheat are and who the tears are. You see, and, and they have to grow together until the end of the age so that they are clearly recognizable. And they will be clearly recognizable. And so again, why do these people behave themselves the way they do? Because of their faith either in God or no faith in God. That's the key, isn't it? And so again, now this net that is dragged, you see. Verse forty eight, which when it was full, they drew to shore and sat down and gathered the good fish into vessels. But cast the bat away, verse forty nine, so shall it be at the end of the world. The angels shall come forth and sever the wicked from among the just and shall cast them into the furnace of fire. There shall be wailing and gnashing of teeth. What an amazing consistency, isn't there with Hebrews, chapter ten? But you have need of patience, that after you have done the will of God, in this age, say, you might receive the promise for yet a little while. And he that shall come will come and will not tarry. Oh, thank God for the certainty of the coming of the Lord Jesus and for the end of the age and for his avenging his elect.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Very good. So there's a good word picture, by the way, in the word for patience there or endurance, as the New King James renders it. The thought of remaining under, remaining under a burden is the idea. Like the guy who's on a hiking trip has the big backpack, you know, you got to keep that burden on. Why? Well, because when you come to make camp, you want to have the essential things, you know, your big tent and your sleeping bag and if you camp with Ezekiel, four or five bunsen burners to like heat the food up on, which was nice. That was, that was great. And you know, all the other stuff that you need when you camp, you keep that in your backpack. And there you're able to stay under the burden and get the benefit when it comes about. Now faith, again, we've said before this week, is not blind faith and Hebrews eleven, one describes faith as the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen. So this is something weighty, something substantive, something that there's evidence for. Now with evidence, of course, there's always a judgment that must be made. We have to weigh evidence. Is the evidence credible or is it preposterous? Now, in this case, the faith that the Lord is talking about, the faith that we've been exhorted to all through the book, of course, is credible because it's from a faithful God. But he tells us, you know, in essence, this has been tried through history. Now, if you're going to try a brand new jet pack, you know, and be able to fly, and I've often thought what a great thing it would be if I could just fly home tomorrow after the study with a jet pack instead of my Toyota Sienna minivan, the swagger wagon. Uh, what it would be to fly home with a jet pack. But you say, well, I don't know if I want to try a jet pack. Now, what if I told you, well, listen, we've had ten thousand professional aviators who have tested this jet pack. They've tested it in all meteorological conditions, rain, snow, wind, hail, hurricanes, tornadoes. They've flown with this thing and it has performed flawlessly. We've never had an accident. It works. Would that give you confidence to go on and try that jet pack? Hopefully it would. Well, he takes us back through history now and says, you know, this isn't just something that somebody said, oh, this will work, but nobody's ever tried it. No, this is the basis from the beginning that God's people have been living by faith. They've been responding to the revelation of God's word. God has told them something and they've believed it. And so he says in verse two, the elders obtained a good testimony by it. Now he's going to describe different avenues where faith comes into play. And in these early verses of Hebrews eleven, he's really going to mark out some of the central, essential beliefs of Christians. We might say some of the central doctrines of the faith. So verse three, we have the doctrine of creation, which as you know, is one of the most attacked ideas in the history of the world. Not only attacked since eighteen fifty nine with the publication of Darwin's On the Origin of Species, but evolution is a very ancient theory that goes back to people well before the time of our Lord Jesus Christ. And even before that, there were other attacks on the notion of the Creator God. You can read Acts seventeen for alternate views, alternate cosmologies, ideas of how the universe came to be. But here he says in verse three, by faith we understand that the worlds were framed by the word of God. So that the things which are seen were not made of things which are visible. Now, on the one hand, that is a circling back to what Hebrews said from the very beginning. Remember, we were told that all things were made through him or by him. And we're also told that he upholds all things by the word of his power. So his word, as we heard before, is carrying this universe onto its appointed end, onto what God wants it to be.
Amen.
But it was made in the first place by that word as well. And of course, scientists like John Lennox point out that this is a very up to date scientific idea that the things that are made are made of things that do not appear because after all, you haven't seen any atoms running around here in camp, have you? Much less electrons, protons, neutrons, neutrinos, quarks, higgs bosons, whatever other little itsy bits the physicists may discover. I mean, you can't see them with the naked eye, right? Whatever is made is made out of things that to our naked eye are invisible. What's more, what is made shows evidence of design. And when we think about human beings, we said it the other day, we have a genetic code. We have a biochemical alphabet that makes us look like we are and what we are in our bodies. It's all determined by our DNA. That's why I'm not six foot nine, you know? It's because of my DNA, because of the genes. And of course, ultimately the Lord is behind that too. But this word of God is the information that brings order to this universe. It has organized the universe, whether we talk about the universe on its macroscopic scale, all of the interlocking solar systems, all of the galaxies. The word of God has put those things in place and given them their order. And right down to the microscopic level, that same order is evidence. The fingerprints of God, we might say in creation. Verse four, though, is going to change to another central Christian doctrine. Henry already referred to it. So we're not going to dwell on it, but here we might just call this by way of shorthand, the doctrine of redemption. Because by faith Abel offered to God a more excellent sacrifice than Cain. So how do we approach God? It has to be in the way he has prescribed. It has to be by sacrifice, the right sacrifice with faith in the provision that God would make. And even though Abel was persecuted by that, the seed of the serpent persecuted is going to persecute the seed of the woman, Genesis three prophesied. Abel was persecuted and killed, the first in a long line of people that have been killed. The Lord spoke about the blood of righteous Abel down to Zechariah the prophet. And it's blood that God is going to demand a reckoning for. His justice is going to not let that go unrequited. And yet that blood and his gifts specifically, it'll talk about his blood in chapter twelve. But his gifts rather are still testified here. They're still being talked about today, that principle of coming by the sacrifice God has provided, not coming by our works, as we heard, not negating the curse and the fall, but coming through the Lord Jesus Christ is the doctrine of redemption, justification by faith through Christ and our salvation and all that's entailed with that. And then in verse five, we switch to another doctrine, the doctrine of resurrection. By faith, Enoch was taken away so that he did not see death and was not found because God had taken him. There it's quoting Genesis five. And for before he was taken, he had this testimony that he pleased God. Now, when you read Genesis five, it's a genealogy, of course. And the common phrase that recurs so much there is, and he died. So we start with Adam and Seth and each one of them died. And we go on down through the different ages or through the generations. And each one of these people died till you get to Enoch. And about Enoch, it doesn't say he died. It said he was not, for God took him. So based on the resurrection, sorry, based on the redemption, based on the sacrifice God has provided, there is the hope of the resurrection. There is the fact that death isn't the end for the believer, that a believer in fact can escape death. That the Lord may come, as I said before, while we're alive and remain. Now, the other thing it tells us is that he pleased God. Doesn't say that in Genesis five, at least not in that way. It says twice, so we don't miss it, he walked with God. So if you want to put this mathematically on a piece of paper, Old Testament at the top of the page, walked with God, in the middle of the page equals New Testament, top of the page, pleased God. In other words, to walk with God is to please God. This is what the new covenant's all about, isn't it? They shall all know you. God wants a relationship. He wants to get to know us. He wants us to get to know him. And that's what Enoch enjoyed. He pleased God therefore. Isn't that wonderful? You don't have to invent some earth shattering thing. You don't have to go on some really difficult pilgrimage. You don't have to bring about world peace or crack insoluble riddles. What God wants from you is for you to spend time with him, for you to get to know him, for you to worship and praise him and thank him and for him to teach you and conform you to the image of his son. Well, verse six interjects the principle, but without faith, it is impossible to please him. For he who comes to God must believe that he is, in other words, that he exists and that he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. Now you could see that, that if you don't believe there is a God, well, what's the point anyway in living differently than this world? What's the point in being willing to suffer for the name of Christ? Or being willing to deny oneself and take up our cross? What's the point? Well, if there's no God, there's no point, but there is a God, you see. And he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. It's worth coming to know him. Not just a rewarder in the sense that our service ultimately is going to be commended by the Lord. Will be given crowns and other things by the Lord, but the ultimate reward is God himself, knowing the Lord. It's worth coming to the Lord who exists to know the Lord. That's the only life worth having. To know the Lord. This is life and life more abundantly, as our Lord Jesus called it. But then in verse seven, we turn, having thought of creation, having thought of the fall and redemption in Abel and Cain, having thought of resurrection in Enoch, we then think in verse seven of judgment to come. By faith Noah, being divinely warned of things not yet seen, moved with godly fear, prepared an ark for the saving of his household, by which he condemned the world and became heir of the righteousness, which is according to faith. So also we've mentioned that several times this week and the story is familiar. But you notice the two sides of the coin, that Noah on one side by his faith, by acting in godly fear, building that ark, and also Jude will tell us he was a preacher of righteousness, that what Noah did thereby was provide a way of salvation for those who believed, a way of being delivered from the judgment. And he and his household, eight souls were saved. But the flip side was by building the ark, he also condemned the world. There was no other way of salvation. That ark was the provision that anyone who came could be saved from the judgment that was coming. Now you say, no, how could the whole world fit in that ark? Well, I presume that it would have been a situation like Jonah three, where Jonah said, yet forty days and Nineveh shall be destroyed. That's what the Lord said through Jonah. And the people repented. And you remember when they did that, that the Lord said, I'm going to spare the city. And is that because God changed his mind? No, it's because God is consistent to himself. He will pardon those who humble themselves and call with faith. Whosoever calleth on the name of the Lord shall be saved. But whoever rejects the Lord's appointed way, they're going to be judged. So we have that doctrine of judgment. And then when we come to Abraham in verse eight, we come to this idea of pilgrimage. That to be a believer in this world is pilgrimage. We thought about this this week as well, that he went out into a country, that he, a place rather, which he would after receive as an inheritance. And he went out not knowing where he was going. By faith, he dwelled in the land of promise as in a foreign country, dwelling in tents with Isaac and Jacob, the heirs with him of the same promise. For he waited for the city which has foundations, whose builder and maker is God. It goes on to include that pilgrim wife he had, Sarah, who received strength to conceive seed when she was past age. And it goes on to say, she judged him faithful who had promised. Therefore, from one man and him good as dead were born as many as the stars of the sky in multitude, innumerable as the sand which is by the seashore. Tremendous, isn't it? They were living in the land that afterward they were going to get for an inheritance, even though in their lifetime, they wouldn't see it occur. But he's going to get there. He's going to see that city and so will we. And in a way, we kind of live that way. And in a way, we kind of live that way too, we live on planet earth. And yet we don't feel at home in the earth right now. Because this earth is in rebellion against the love we, against the one we love so well, against the one who has saved us. And yet we're waiting for a new heavens and new earth wherein dwells righteousness. We're waiting for him to rule over this world, as Brother Henry said. And to bring in judgment and to deal with the guilty and vindicate his saints. But we're also waiting for the better world, the better new heavens and new earth that are going to come. So we have that great doctrine of pilgrimage. And that would entail for him testing of offering up Isaac, as we've also thought about this week. And he goes on to bless the other patriarchs, but we can perhaps revisit that later tonight. So I'm going to close us right now in a word of prayer. We're going to take a 15 minute break and then Brother Henry's going to come back and give his testimony. And again, I had to do the sprint thing.
Just one minute here.
You can have five, brother.
No, no, five is dangerous, five is dangerous.
You can have one.
These things, just a couple of things. Faith must always be defined as a right response to God's revelation. That's what faith is. And that's very different from how the world defines faith. What does it mean to have faith? Faith as is worship, by the way. Worship can only be a response to God's revelation, so is faith, real faith. The other thing is, Enoch walked with God, Enoch pleased God. How did he do it? Without faith, it is impossible to please God. How do we walk with God? By believing God. How do we please God? By believing God. And then when you come to Noah, something that's interesting before it goes to the fact that he condemned the world by building the ark. And that's an interesting thing, just the way believers live, in other words, what world are you living for? You're living for the world to come? That's why you suffer in this one, that's why you lose your life now, you save it. The fact that Noah spent his life energy in building an ark condemned the world all around them. Because it said to the world, he was living for reality. Which all this brings in the fact that faith isn't escapism. Faith isn't having your head in the sand. Faith is facing reality, see? That's important. And then the other thing about Noah, which is powerful, is that the first thing that it says about him is that his building of the ark was first and foremost motivated because he wanted to save his family. And that's powerful too. Later in the epistles to Timothy, you find godliness begins in the, in the home, you know, our family. Our burden to see our children saved. That's a tremendous manifestation of the reality of faith. And then something also about Abraham and Abraham looking for a city in verse 10. And in the, back to Cain, and God allowed Cain to then go out from his presence and build tremendous civilizations. And why did God allow that? And why did God allow those civilizations to grow to those proportions, you see? And then in growing to those proportions, seemingly in, in, in an appearance of human progress and human advancement. Well, it wasn't human progress and human advancement. They self imploded. And people that were facing reality would look at what was happening to these great civilizations. Not because they lacked in human intellect, but they lacked faith, see, from the heart. And what happened to those societies? They began to crumble. And what happened as people that looked at reality and faced reality saw what the true character of those societies were. They began looking beyond those societies and beyond that world, didn't they? And like Abraham, it says, and then Enoch was born in those days and men began to call on the name of the Lord. Abraham, say, he looked for a society, for a building, for, for human advancement that would last forever. And where is that found? Well, it's in that humanity that God himself is building through faith in himself. That's all I have to say.
All right, let's pray. Father, we are thankful for that city that's coming. And one where the Lamb is the light thereof and the Lord God is the light. We won't need the sun or the moon or the stars. We'll be able to enjoy thee in a way that we never have been able to so far. Even though we enjoy what times of communion we have with thee, both personally and corporately. We're glad that there's coming a day when we'll love thee with unsinning heart. And we just think of how these had to make a choice. That if they were mindful to return, they could go back to the city from which they came. But they saw that city coming, they were realistic about it, as our brother said. And they wanted to live for that greater reality, for something permanent, not something ephemeral and passing away. And so Father, help us to live this way too, to keep a very light grip on this world. And to use the things of this world for thy glory, to be stewards of our time even, redeeming the time because the days are evil. Help us in the next session as Brother Henry shares the testimony of thy grace towards him. And we pray it in the Lord Jesus' name.